This is a new business item moving forward. Any questions from the scale at this time for the commission? Having no public hearings and no old business this evening, we'll move straight into new business. First is to consider drug fund grant application from the Boys and Girls Club of McIntosh County in the amount of fifteen thousand. This is an action item. Just to reiterate Ms. Dodd's earlier statement, the grant is from the McIntosh County Drug and Abuse and Treatment and Education Fund. The source of those funds are collected from five and four pitchers for tickets here in McIntosh County. So that is where the source is coming from. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the application and award the fifteen thousand to the Boys and Girls Club of McIntosh County.
A motion to accept from Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Lotz and all those in favor? Motion carries. Two, moving on, consider resolution twenty dash twenty-two dash one to establish qualifying fees for the 2022 election cycle that Ms. Gale just presented. Do I have a motion to accept said fees?
Make that motion.
A motion or from Commissioner Lotz and do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Harrell. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item number three, to consider appointments to the Dairy and McIntosh County Joint Historic Preservation Commission. I know there was some discussion on this last night at the workshop. Do I have a motion at this time for the appointments?
I make the motion that we table this. Resolution pending additional applicants.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lotz into table said appointments until additional applicants come forward. We did not receive the memo applicants. Do I have a second for said motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McClellan. All those in favor? Motion carries. Number four, consider agreement with the Georgia Department of Human Services, Division of Family and Children's Services for the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. There's a great deal of information provided for us in our packet. This is an agreement for low-income household water assistance. It is between the State Department of Human Services, who administer on set parameters on a statewide basis to provide public assistance for the disadvantaged, disabled, and elderly residents of the state. It would be between the Human Service Group and the McIntosh Board of Commissioners as a home water supplier to subscribe through, or residents who subscribe through the county's water system. This would be to cover and reduce arrears, rates, and fees associated with reconnection or prevention of disconnection of services and rate reduction to assist low-income households with water and wastewater reconnection, ongoing services for households eligible for low-income assistance through the said program. This is funding sourced through federal dollars, not any locally. Do I have a motion to accept said agreement?
I want to just ask a couple of questions. So would we identify people that would be in need of this and let them know that it's available, or would we advertise it and it would be upon them to apply for it?
I believe it would have to be advertised and they would have to go to this office and this is that office in front of me.
Yes, I spoke with Trish Hamilton, who's over the Coastal Area Action Committee that will be the one that'll mention this grant locally. The how it would work is if there is a water client that is in arrears, they will contact that agency, they will process the application and take the work, and if they are approved, they are just cut a check to McIntosh County for that bill. So it's totally handled by someone outside of the county, county office.
But we would identify who those people are?
No, they will self-identify.
Self-identify.
And we would come into the county annex and fill out the paperwork.
So we will advertise and it will be my recommendation that we do advertise the services across our website so that our constituents are aware of if this service is available and how to access it.
And say again, what was the beginning? If we approve the grant, what would be the start date?
This can go, this ends in September and I think, what is that, a year?
Yeah, it indicates in here that it's an annual renewal.
The main thing is that it goes to that agency. We've just agreed to receive a check from that agency, not process the paperwork.
And it's works similar to the electric bill that right now, you know, assistance by electric, but through that same agency and the same process.
We are only previewing it as a vendor, as a water vendor essentially.
So I'd like to make a motion that we enter to the agreement with the Georgia Department of Human Services, Division of Family and Children's Services for the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll say second by Commissioner Lotz and all those in favor? Motion carries. Number five is to consider resolution twenty-two-two, requesting inclusion and consideration for all commercial development projects, including casino gambling. This is a resolution on the heels of the announcement from earlier this month by House Speaker David Ralston, indicating that lawmakers might put gambling on ballot for Georgia voters this year to decide. There is a slightly revised version in the packet. Do I have a motion for this resolution?
I make the motion.
To accept? Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Harrell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McClellan. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Before, I was waiting for some discussion on that. I know last night we did talk about what that included. It was explained, I think, by the attorney, what we're entering into and what it, what all it includes. It doesn't change the motion or anything, but I think for the public, maybe if they understand what we're agreeing to be a part of.
I think the most effective way to answer that is to say that the message, and it includes, the resolution includes this, the message to be sent is that McIntosh County is open for business. I think there's been an impression before that rural counties aren't as open and ready for business as, as more developed counties are. And as a result, I think some of the developments are moving towards, especially the kind of development that McIntosh County would be looking for, that would be green, that would be environmentally friendly. That kind of development tends to go other places. I think we saw that with the Turtle Rehab Center, with the Jekyll, and some other things. And what we're asking is that not only casino gambling, but for, consider McIntosh County for whatever type of commercial development comes along and leave it to the county, McIntosh County, or whatever county they're suggesting, to turn it down, not to, not to forego a county simply because they're rural or they might not be at the top of the list.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion on item five? Moving on to item six, consider acceptance of Boatyard Way, a sixty-foot right-of-way with paved surface from Claude Sheen. Discussion last night, just for clarification, this would be addition to a county roadway. The county would be adopting the existing roadway.
And ma'am, just, just for reference, for you all, just to restate what we said last night, of course, the acceptance would be subject to the commercial survey establishing that the roadway is actually in the property, in the right-of-way that we're receiving. That can be done instantly.
And for clarity, and for my own clarity, as well as obviously that might be you, why, why is it in the best interest of the county to assume responsibility?
I don't think that, that if anyone ever presents it, it's in the best interest to accept any roadway if you don't live on it. But there's a significant residential development on this road. There's also two, at least two properties that are its own general commercial now, or soon will be. One's already in operation, a very large boat repair facility is there, boat storage facility. There's going to be, as we understand, another boat storage facility there. Also interesting, there's a campground attached, although I'm not familiar with that campground. But this roadway is heavily traveled, and I think it would benefit all of those property owners to have this road maintained by the county. It is already paved.
Will the extra traffic include eighteen-wheelers that will deteriorate this road at the faster rate?
Gosh, I had talked with Commissioner Harrell about this fact earlier. I hope McIntosh County is able, once we accept it, to regulate that type of transportation that's going up and down these roadways. In the past, I'm told that relatively large dump trucks and that type of thing went up and down these roadways and dumped stuff, almost like in a landfill. That's not allowed in the general commercial district, so I would hope that McIntosh County would immediately address that.
Mr. Harrell, do you have any, any of your constituents concerned about extra traffic?
No, I'm going to say the log truck.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do I have a motion for action on item six? I make a motion that we accept the Boatyard Way, a sixty-foot right-of-way with a paved surface from Claude Sheen. Motion from Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, all those in favor? All right, moving on. Item seven, consider resolution twenty-two-two-three to approve the reapportionment plan for McIntosh County. The resolution is in our packets this evening. We were provided with a copy of the finalized draft, again, from our meeting last week. This is just updated map within census blocks because our census numbers dropped in the county. As a result, the population shows District One with two thousand seven hundred forty-two persons, District Two with two thousand seven hundred forty persons, District Three with two thousand seven hundred twenty-four, and District Four with two thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine, for a total count of ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-five. Any questions about the reapportionment plan at this time? Do I have a motion for approval of said plan? I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-two-three to approve the reapportionment plan for McIntosh County. I have a motion from Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Harrell. Any discussion?
I just wanted to ask, I know we had a little bit of discussion when we initially looked at the map and maybe just read out the numbers, but you said that this was as close as you can get to evening out, I guess, the districts based on population, and it didn't change a whole lot, but there was one district reminding me that we had to make sure that we kept a certain number.
Well, I mean, one of the, one of the, excuse me, one of the priorities that we have to keep in mind is that we don't want to put any city commissioner out of the district if we can avoid that. We had several drafts, one of which actually did do that and had to get back, draw it again. The number, this, one of the other most important priorities that we have to keep in mind is that we want to keep our minority majority district intact, and that's District Three. And we're able to do that with these numbers. The last thing that we're trying to do, and probably one of the most important, is that we don't want to split census blocks or voting precincts. So I think this, this map is as close to even for each district as we could make it. I think on the final numbers, it was less than one percent deviation over all four of them. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to address them.
And just to make a general comment, while District Three, the minority district, did indeed lose a number of percentage points, however, I feel confident that Mr. Popple did, who member else was assistant, did the best to make sure that everything was as fair as possible, but there is a loss. I'd like to make a more general statement, is that McIntosh County feared worse than almost every other county in the state when it came to the census, because we as a county did not completely censor, and therefore our population dropped significantly, and that has a number of negative impact across the board. And I said that to say this, there are a number of opportunities for citizens to participate in government, and I would encourage as many citizens as possible to participate in government because when we don't, negative things can happen, such as losing a large percentage of our population compared to all of the county's citizens. In the state, there was only three other counties that feared worse than we did for census. That's it, thank you.
So moving on to item number eight, under new business, consider application for rezoning of four point five oh acres by Robert Walzac Jr., located on Old Townsend Road in Alonia. This is known as Track B1, further referred to by Math and Parcel 0047, 0047. The current zoning classification is R3, residential, and proposed zoning is CG for general commercial. We did have his agent, Mr. John Bagley, with us last night at the workshop. He is here tonight as well, spoke with us and shared the plans for a future TP lodging site, which would form under the short-term rental guidelines of the commercial zoning. His intention is to build this out in two phases, four TPs per phase with a bounce. There was no opposition at the planning and zoning hearing. There was a recommendation of approval from the planning and zoning. This is an action item for this evening. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion that we accept the rezoning request.
A motion from Commissioner Lotz to accept the rezoning. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner McClellan. Any discussion?
If I share, if you don't mind, I would like the gentleman to briefly talk about what we discussed today. I think it's an exciting thing for McIntosh, and I'd like the more of the citizens to be aware.
That's right.
I didn't hear.
He would like you to discuss, if you will, this evening.
Yeah, brief.
Brief summary from last night.
To you or the group or?
To the camera.
We are televised this evening.
I want to take the four acres and build what is called a TP Village, which is, will be eight Native American TPs that will be rented out as a overnight, very short-term lodging. I'll start at four, and if that works out, we'll be eight. And it'll be on Old Townsend Road in Townsend.
When do you project that you'll be open for business?
I'm sorry?
When do you think you'll be open for business?
I'm sorry?
Okay, thank you. That's it.
I got ahead of myself a little bit there. So I have a motion from Commissioner Lotz and a second from Commissioner McClellan. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item number nine, under new business, consider application for rezoning of four point nine two acres by BA Enterprise LLC, located on Boatyard Way in Sheldon Bluff. This is further referred to as Math and Parcel number 0071, 0010, 003. The current zoning classification is R1, and proposed zoning is CG. Just notes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, this is intent to build boat storage on said property. There was a neighborhood property owner out of Charlestown Landing Subdivision who did voice some concerns at the planning and zoning hearing about burning on-site and odor, but the neighboring resident smelled from said burning, which I think we addressed last night. As commissioners, we acknowledge that that is a separate matter and does need to be addressed. There was a recommendation to approve this from the planning and zoning, and this is an action item for this evening.
I've gotten some more information about that burning thing, and I'm not necessarily saying I'm going to vote against it, but I have some significant concerns about the burning that's happened on that property. Initially, last night, I thought that they were talking about, the gentleman was clearing the land, was burning his debris. I've been later informed that he's burning debris from other areas other than his own property. And if that is the case, I do strongly, strongly encourage the, the appropriate authorities to address that. Mike is telling you to be breaking the rules now. How many more rules are you going to break later on when you come to the show?
All right, so do we have a motion for action on this item? Okay. Do we want to table said item until the burning debris matter is sorted?
The, with all due respect, the way, the way it works is that if it's rejected, there's a, there's a period of time that you can't bring the application again for. So tonight, it would be appropriate to either accept or reject. It's a zoning proposal itself, and if it's rejected, there's, I think there's a six-month waiting period before you can bring the item back to the, back to court.
Do we also have an option of tabling it?
Can I ask this too? I'm never thinking about the answer to that, but as was stated a minute ago, this is, it's a separate issue. There's an issue of zoning that we're here to vote on tonight, but there's also an issue of some burning and things that are taking place on the property that is a code enforcement issue. So I just want to clarify that when I vote, or when we vote, we're voting on the application that was sent forward for zoning, and that we, I, I think we would all like to make sure that the other issue is handled, but I want to separate that we're voting on zoning, and that really doesn't have to do with whether or not currently on the residential property, they're doing what they should or should not do. So that's back on us. So I just want to make sure for myself, we're still going to handle the burning, but as far as the zoning, they got approval and they said what they're going to do on it, and we're going to hold them to that. That's our job.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I want to just.
They can look into.
I'm thinking out loud there.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for rezoning for the four point nine two acres by BA Enterprise LLC, located on Boatyard Way in Sheldon, further referred to as the Math and Parcel number 0071, 0010003. Okay, I have a motion to accept from Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second? Okay. Let me call for a new motion. Do I have a motion to deny the current zoning classification from R1 to CG on the Boatyard Way in Sheldon Bluff?
I make the motion to table it.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Lotz to table item number nine at this time. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second from Commissioner Harrell.
As a matter of, ma'am, as a matter of parliamentary procedure, I think what we need to do is say when that item might come back off the table. Generally, when you table something, it would just stay on the table for the meeting. You know what I'm saying? It would come back up in the time during the meeting. But, but if we're, if we're sending it, just like we did one of the previous issues, if we're sending it to a time server, I think that would be appropriate. So to say when, I think part of the motion needs to be, we table it until.
Okay, I'd like to modify my, modify my motion if that's appropriate. I'd like to modify my motion to table it until the February Board of Commissioners meeting.
I'll second very much.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling it until the February Board of Commissioners meeting? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item ten, consider application for rezoning of zero point one seven acres by BA Enterprise LLC, located at 1143 Club Street in Sheldon Bluff, further referred to as Math and Parcel 0072C, 0091. The current zoning classification is R1, and the proposed zoning is CG. The planning and zoning notes indicate that the representative indicates that he wanted to use this as a rentable building space for meetings and special functions, possibly converting into a small restaurant later in the future. There was no opposition at planning and zoning hearing. The recommendation to approve came from planning and zoning last night. The commissioners with the attorney did review findings as it regards to compliance, specifically traffic and parking, and the size of the corner lot, meeting setback requirements. Do I have a motion for action on item ten?
Can I just get clarification? Last night, we talked about the size of this property for commercial. So do we have a requirement on the size that the lot has to be in order to, because we talked about last night, and once we've moved forward with this, it would be zone commercial, but then there's no room for parking, there's no room for this and that and the other. So there's not a limitation on commercial zoning to have a minimum lot size in order to, I mean, that doesn't really make sense to me, that you would have a piece of property that's too small to do anything commercial on it, but it could be zone commercial?
Share some of those concerns.
The area regulations, the minimum lot size is two thousand square feet if public order and sewer are provided. Minimum lot width at the building line must be forty feet if community order and public, community public order and sewer are provided. Minimum front yard setback from the street is twenty feet. Minimum side yard setback is ten feet or twenty feet from the street. Minimum rear yard setback is ten feet. The maximum building height is forty-five feet, and the maximum percentage of block coverage is seventy-five percent. So he goes into this knowing what the, what the requirements for the lot are, and his footprint, as I understand it, is relatively small. The minimum lot area is slightly more than two thousand square feet. It's what, point one seven?
Seventy-two, yeah, seventy-two.
Point seven-two acres.
So again, that would come down to if it were zone commercial, they would, he would have to, have to adhere to all that, and we would provide guidance through?
The building, the building is fact that it would go out, and he would present this whatever use that he was proposing for the lot. He would present that, and he would be called whether or not he could conform to the point where Archie or his office would approve it.
Can someone tell me what's adjacent to that property?
On one side, there's two sides of streets, and actually, I think it's three sides of streets, and one side, the back, that would back up to a residential area.
What's across the street from it?
Uh, it's right there on the bluff, you know where that little bridge is with, it's right down from Hunter's Cafe, right in that general area. See, the packet is just hard to see the outline in person.
Okay, do I have a motion for item number ten at this time?
A question for the attorney.
Yes, sir.
If we deny, what's his, what's the waiting period for a real response?
Based on the approval of the zoning committee, I make a motion that we consider the application for rezoning of zero point one seven acres by BA Enterprises LLC, located at 1143 Club Street in Sheldon Bluff, further referred to as Math and Parcel number 0072C, 0091. And that's a motion to accept the rezoning?
Yes, from R1 to CG, general commercial.
Okay, do I have a second on Commissioner McClellan's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner McClellan to accept, a second from Commissioner Lotz, and all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, discussion?
I'd like to make a comment on both of these, and I want to just make this clarification on my motions and on where I stand with it. I feel like if we have a, if the zoning board has sent us something that has been approved, I do think it's our responsibility to take a look at it and make an informed decision, you know, and either put our standard of approval on what they've already approved or not. But I also think that I don't want to hold something up with zoning. But I also think that I don't want to hold something up with zoning that the zoning board feels like should be zoned or it can be approved based on something that we perceive that they might do in the future. And I feel like that we need to hold people who are rezoning things for commercial or any other thing in line with our ordinances. So I feel like that, I just want to clarify that. I do have some reservations about the approval of these, but I don't, that's not fair to do that based on the zoning that they are clearly in line and have been approved to have, but I do think that we need to, as a county, be, for lack of a better phrase, more on top of what people are doing with their commercial property, and if it's affecting those around it. So I just want to clarify that with my discussion and my motions.
And I have a question of the attorney, does it require three yes votes? Any action in order towards three yeses? Chairman, I would guess we'd be looking at votes also this year.
And that's on the application for rezoning on item ten, or did I miss that off on nine too?
I included you as, when you announced that it passed, I included your badness in three to one pass.
Okay. On number nine, my stance would be that I am in favor of the rezoning of Boatyard Way. I'm aware that the burning of debris is a code enforcement type of situation.
With all due respect to you, Chair, but that was not the motion, that was proposed though.
Right, except, but, and so on that one, that would, that completely, that completely changes, changes that one and that one, on that one. Okay, on the matter at hand, item ten, on located at eleven forty-three Club Street, I would be in favor of the rezoning of R-1 to CG of, on that parcel.
And I would like to revisit nine, just for clarity, because with the statement that Mr. Jordan stated that we need three to approve, the attorney has made an assumption, I want to verify whether that assumption was correct or not, that you vote in favor of tabling or vote against tabling.
I'm fine either way. We can, if he has me on record as tabling, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, item number eleven at this time, consider application for rezoning of lots thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one of New Embrun subdivision by Varian Storage LLC, located at ten eighty-seven Blunt Crossing Road Southeast in Varian, further referred to as map and parcel number zero-zero-five-three-A, zero-zero-zero-three. The current zoning classification is CN for neighborhood commercial, and proposed zoning is CG for general commercial. This is, as they stated last night, expanding the current mini storage facility located on the property at ten eighty-seven Blunt Crossing. This is to upgrade and expand to allow for climate-controlled storage. There was no opposition present for the planning and zoning hearing. It was a recommendation from planning and zoning to approve said expansion, I'm sorry, said classification change. This is an action item, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the application for rezoning lots thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one of New Embrun subdivision by Varian Storage LLC, located at ten eighty-seven Blunt Crossing Road Southeast. The current zoning is CN, and the proposed is CG. That's my motion.
Okay, a motion to accept the rezoning from Commissioner McCullough, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Watson. All those in favor? Motion carries. Any discussion on item eleven at this time? Okay. Item twelve, consider application for rezoning lots nine, ten, eleven, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-three of Hudson Creek subdivision by William and Margaret Wallace. This is located off of Georgia Highway ninety-nine in Meridian, further referred to as map and parcel zero-zero-six-four-M, zero-zero-three-five. The current zoning classification is R-1, and the proposed zoning is PUD. This is to provide expansion of additional short-term housing for guests at the multi-use facility on adjacent property at one-zero-zero-seven-one, Georgia Highway ninety-nine, known as Hudson Creek Lodge. There was no opposition at the planning and zoning meeting. There was a recommendation from the planning and zoning board to approve a zoning request. This is an action item, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application for rezoning lots nine, ten, eleven, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-three of Hudson Creek subdivision. I have a motion to accept from Commissioner McCullough, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson. Any discussion?
Yes, if you don't mind, Chairman, can you explain for the viewing audience, what is a PUD?
A PUD is abbreviation for Planned Unit Development. This is essentially, it changes the density requirements for housing on a parcel property.
These are smaller units?
Yes, sir.
For short-term, for short-term rental.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner McCullough, and a second by Commissioner Watson. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries.
Can I make a point of clarity, just for the audience? Planning and development is very specific to the property, so it did for this instance, but if it come again in front of McIntosh County, it would be different, like it's a very specific, it's a very specific plan, just so the record and everybody understands.
Can you explain that more? I'm unsure what you're.
So planning and development is maybe a new vision for a piece of land that doesn't quite meet the ordinances, or maybe this vision wasn't thought of when the ordinances were created for a broad spectrum. So a very specific set of ordinances with lot sizes, lot furniture setbacks, building construction amenities, allowing uses, all that is put into a HUD plan. It's like an ordinance for a single-family home of R-1 or CG, but we make it, and a lot of times, we provide extra amenities in order for the county to allow something that's not specifically defined in the ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else on item number twelve? I do believe that we have a reason for executive session to discuss personnel as it applies to EMS, so do I have a motion for executive session at this time?
I make a motion to move into executive session.
I have a motion, Commissioner McCullough, do I have a second?
Second.
We do not anticipate action after.